...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Please be seated. I'd like to start by thanking the Chair for a TV. Okay, citizen concerns, anyone wish to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, need motion to approve the agenda for today?
Sir Chair, I move approval of the agenda dated May 12, 2015.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of the minutes of May 5, 2015.
Move approval of the minutes dated May 5, 2015.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Need motion to approve the claims.
Need to approve the claims.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're gonna do a, yes, I'll turn my microphone on.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to do a little presentation and we'll have Curly stay right out there. We honor Harland Curly Salvatore today. Curly has lived a life of service and literally hundreds of our community have benefited from his commitment to others. He began with the, I'm gonna begin with a little story about him that shows that from a young age, Curly strived to help others. When he was 12, he worked in a grocery store not far from his home. When the owner was ill and unable to work, Curly ran the store. He would head over to the man's house in the morning, pick up the money, and then walk over and open the store. He paid all the delivery men, he ordered products, and he ran the store until the owner's wife came in the afternoon to close, and then he would walk her home every night. There are many examples of Curly's performing acts of kindness. Curly has served as Sergeant of Arms and in various other positions in the Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 18, which is currently known as Local 33. He has worked the Union Labor Picnic for decades. He continues to serve as a member of the Community Services Committee for the Northwest Iowa Labor Council and has had the honor of tolling the bell for Iowans involved in fatal work accidents for many, many years. He has been inducted into the Northwest Iowa Labor Hall of Fame. His strong unionful philosophy and commitment to service has led Curly to volunteer at the Soup Kitchen for decades. He has also served as the Labor Representative on the Community Action Agency Board of Directors and the United Way. He's done work for numerous nonprofits and churches, including Rivers Edge, Center for Suland, Mary Trailia, Food Bank, Community Action Agency, and many, many, many others. Curly volunteered his time to do all of the plumbing for the free dental clinic that was held a few years ago. He also serves on a scholarship board at Bear Cliff University, and the list goes on. Curly has also assisted many elderly and low-income residents by providing his services for free, parts included. Curly has a giant heart and our community is better, a better place because of his efforts. And there is one act that really sets Curly above the rest. When a friend asked him in 1965 to assist the Carmelite Nuns, Curly helped. A beautiful, beautiful friendship developed and the sisters became, began to rely on Curly for all of their plumbing and fix-it needs. He has faithfully served them for 50 years and affectionately calls them "my Carmelites." Not only does Curly do the plumbing for the sisters, but he remembers them with thoughtful gifts throughout the year. He has served for many of the eight nuns that have passed away as a pallbearer. All of these acts of kindness make Harland, and nobody calls him Harland, it's Curly, a role model and outstanding citizen in our communities.
I'm gonna read this resolution and then we'd like to have Mr. Salvatore come forward and receive this from the Chair. It's a resolution thanking and commending Harland Curly Salvatore for your service to Woodbury County, whereas Harland Salvatore has demonstrated himself to be an outstanding citizen of Woodbury County by volunteering many hours unselfishly for years, and whereas the service given by Harland Salvatore as a Woodbury County citizen has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of the Board, and this was unanimously signed, thank and commend Harland Salvatore for his years, for his service to Woodbury County, and be it further resolved that it is the wish of all those signing below that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Harland Salvatore. Be it so resolved this 5th day of May, 2015, the day in which it was signed.
Harland.
Now I got one more story to tell. Harland, last week, a week ago, was asked by a friend to go out to a home and do some plumbing repair. So Harland did his duty, went out to the house, had a key to get in, opened the door, and there was a bulldog waiting for him. Now Harland has met, never met a dog he didn't like, but this dog didn't like him. The dog got his best plumbing tool, so he is going to be on sabbatical for a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that. Thank you, folks. Okay, Human Resources, Ed. Need a motion to approve memorandum of personnel transactions?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Authorized Chairman to sign authorization to initiate hiring process. Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of request to de-authorize position. You wanna talk about that?
Yes, what happened is we had somehow, I don't know exactly when it happened, we reviewed job descriptions back to 1997 and position descriptions. Somehow or another, from reading board minutes, I believe it was from July of 2012, Ben should've been in a project engineer's position. Somehow or another, the project, project engineer's position was eliminated, and he was placed, he was coded in the assistant engineer's position. He's coded in the assistant engineer's position, but all of his paperwork and the title of his position still was project engineer. So from what we can see, there was just a mistake that was made back in 2012 that put him in the assistant engineer as opposed to project engineer's position. And that's, I'm sorry, in the, I reversed it again. In the project engineer's position instead of the assistant engineer's position. He should've been in the assistant engineer's position, and which carried with it the higher wage. He would move June 3 to the higher wage based on his years of service in that position and then would follow with the contract from there forward.
Need a motion?
Mr. Chair, could I ask one question?
Sure.
So just so I'm clear on this, that standard practice that in de-authorizing the position and moving to the new position, then he would also move along with the three and a quarter wage plan increase?
Well, it's standard that if you're in that position, if you're promoted to that position or if you qualify for that position at a given time, that when the contract changes, which the contract would change July 1st, that you would just follow with that. The key in his, in his case is that he had the six years in that position, so now he was moving to that next level. The confusion with this is that, that he should've been assigned as the project engineer all along, and he was assigned as the, I'm sorry, he was, should've been assigned as the assistant engineer, and he was listed, he was incorrectly listed in the position he was in. That never should've happened. It was a mistake somewhere between the three of us that are involved in, in setting up the position that he would've been in. And it happened in 2012, so I don't know how to account for that piece. I just know that he should be in the position that we're moving him to now and that, and given his years of seniority, then he would stay in that project engineer position and move to the higher level. Did that answer it, or did I really botch that up?
Oh, that, that makes sense.
All right, need a motion?
Move to de-authorize.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Health fair.
Yes, we're, we just wanna set the time for the health fair, get that on the agenda so we can start locking in our vendors for the health fair, and wanna make sure that everybody's aware of it and ready to go. So it's been something that we've done for a number of years now and always been very successful. We think it helps get people involved in the wellness program and moves things along.
For the benefit of new members, can you describe what that looks like just briefly?
Sure, absolutely. The health fair is, we bring in vendors like Mercy, the local cardiovascular groups. We bring in some of the fitness clubs, just mostly medical providers. We also bring in vendors like Wellmark and Delta Dental, our Secure Benefits, who does our Flex Administration. People like that, bring them in, they typically have prizes and things that they give away. We try to just get people really heavily involved in the wellness piece. Good kickoff to our fall open enrollment.
And they do some testing?
Yes, they do testing typically. We do some of the carotid artery testing, we do some blood pressures, we do a variety of different things as well. There's usually somebody there to talk about diabetes. I mean, we usually get a really full panel, I mean, they fill the atrium up here. And we've just had really, I thought, impressive responses.
And we have done a lunch afterwards, are, are you planning on doing that this year too?
Yes, if we could, we'd love to. We've always done a lunch afterwards that's free to the county employees. Yes.
Not the hot dog?
Not the hot dog, no.
Healthy lunch.
We, we try to make sure that everything literally is healthy that's there, from whole grain buns to lean meat to fruits and vegetables, all offered there. I know I've seen Larry serve a number of times, and Mark, and Jackie.
Do you have a date?
Yes, we do. October 27th would be Tuesday at one, and it would last, it would start shortly after the board, well, I'm sorry, after the board meeting, excuse me. We usually start at about 11 o'clock, 10:30, 11 o'clock.
Okay. Need a motion?
What time would you like the motion for?
Let's say 10:30.
Move that.
Did I write it or down wrong?
Move that it be set for October 27th at 10:30 a.m.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, performance evaluation training.
Fall safety training.
Fall safety training.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry, fall safety training?
Fall safety training, we're, this is an annual event that we like to have for the folks from Secondary Roads and from Conservation. We like to get every, we like to bring in some speakers and have some quality training to just help keep safety in mind. We're working with our Workman's Comp Carrier, IMWCA, and our liability carrier, the folks from Gallagher. Bring in some good speakers and set up a full day, including wellness exams.
And you have a date for that?
Yes, that would be on November 12th.
Need a, need a motion to approve the safety training on November 12th?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
What time?
Uh, we started, 8:00 a.m. is when we start.
That was part of your motion?
At 8:00 a.m.
And they have donuts?
No. No. We, they, they used to. This last year, we did not have donuts, we had fruit, and we did have eggs and sausage and things like that that are a healthy protein, but we did not have donuts.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Performance evaluation.
Performance evaluation, we do have the privilege of having a gentleman by the name of Jeff Pankinen, who's willing to come up here with the Department of Administrative Services and educate everyone on the use of the evaluation system. He's the trainer for the state, he trains state leaders on how to evaluate their employees. We thought it would make sense, since this is their first year using their system, that we have somebody that's got real expertise come in face-to-face. He can train up to 20 in a meeting, meetings are approximately four hours long, and the meetings would be from 8 to 12, and then there'd be a lunch break, and then again, he would have a second class from 1 to 5. So we'd be able to train a total of 40 people. And, which I think this, given that this is the first year, this is just an exceptional opportunity for us to be able to have someone of his caliber come in and teach this.
You're training all staff on this?
Training all the leaders.
All the leaders?
Yes.
All department heads, is that what we're talking about?
Department heads and in as many seconds as we can, depending on the size of the department.
And probably deputies.
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, sure.
So this evaluation that we see in front of us, the Woodbury County Performance Plan and Evaluation, is that something that we've tailored from the state?
Yes.
And is this, this is not mandated, this is something that we are choosing to, to do and to model after?
Yes, it's, it's not mandated that we model after them, it is something we chose to do. We looked at it from a variety of perspectives. One, we just really liked the material that was there and the approach that they took, you know. Tell us what your most important functions are. Let's see how you've, if you're meeting expectations, if you're not meeting expectations in certain areas or if you're exceeding them, we need to know that. They also want to find out what the, as you're dealing with these most important functions, you know, what other things are you looking at? We're trying to set department goals through this process. You know, what are the most important functions for the department? So we wanna lay out a number of different pieces that we thought were well-covered here. One thing I would mention, our union contract with AFSMI does require that we have completed applications every year. They could file a prohibitive practice if we did not complete evaluations.
Why don't you talk about the DHS assessment done here a couple, three weeks ago?
Oh, yes, and the DHS assessment, they did have, they did have evaluations that were completed, and they were, they were in their files, so we had, I'm sorry, they were not completed. So we, we did point out to the folks from DHS when they were here doing their audit that literally that morning, before they got here with their surprise visit, we did discuss and lay out the, the need for evaluations and lay out the basic process. We told them it would be similar to the one that they had been doing with the state. They were very pleased with that because this is a part of a requirement that they have. Juvenile detention also has a requirement that they do ongoing evaluations, that's with the state. So between the contract, the requirement for social services, and the requirement by, for juvenile detention to have these evaluations, we just thought it made sense. The state also, we thought, made sense because we deal with the same unions that they deal with. AFSMI, obviously, and CWA, they're, they seem to be comfortable with this evaluation form. Just made a lot of sense, made it a lot easier than trying to sell them on a new evaluation system.
Have you used this form in the past, or this is the first year then that you're using the form? And then would this apply to department heads as well, or this would only be for employees that the department heads are overseeing?
Well, first, our initial kickoff, it would be for the employees. Certainly, this would, could be something that the board could use as a method to evaluate department heads.
I've seen a lot of evaluations, been a part of being evaluated by many different forms through the years, and I, as I looked at this, I, I thought it looked not too cumbersome. It seemed to make sense to me when I reviewed it, and so.
Thank you, yeah, we, that's kind of what we thought too. We thought it wasn't too bulky, it didn't get into areas that didn't make sense. It helped make you think as a department head, okay, what are my goals? As this, for this job function, what are the five core functions of this job? And we've got this huge, long list of duties, but what are the five core functions that this person does? And if you can get down to that, and are they performing those five core functions, you can really see whether they're, whether they're doing what they should, they're contributing appropriately, and it gives them a good feedback. Okay, these are the five things that I should be doing, the things that I should concentrate on most completely. Am I doing that? If I'm not, then maybe I need to shift my expertise into these areas a little more, put my duties here. So I, I think it's just a really good way to establish give and take, too. As an employee, there's nothing worse than wondering if you're doing the right job and having no idea if you really are. And maybe you're off doing something that your employer or your supervisor doesn't think is appropriate. This way, we kinda help pull that back in line, too.
And they're yearly evaluations, right?
Yes, ma'am, yearly. We proposed for those larger departments that do them on an ongoing basis, that they continue to do them on an ongoing basis. For most of the rest of the departments, we think the third quarter probably makes good sense. It's prior to budget, it's just after you've completed your fiscal year.
And the contract says yearly, there's no thought to spread it out if you, to every two or three years if you've had X amount of goodie valves or?
The AFSMI contract does require annual evaluations, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
This is for the hiring of a trainer, correct?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Medical claims missed.
Yes, we had a situation where an employee's spouse worked for a large box store here in the area. They, they provided that information to our TPA at the time, First Administrators. First Administrators assumed they were covered under their insurance. When claims came in for this person after they had stopped working there, First Administrators went under the assumption that they had, that they had continued to work there and they were covered under the insurance. Because they weren't getting communication back from the insurance carrier for this large box store, they just kinda put the claim on hold, put it on a shelf, didn't pay it. It should've been paid, it was a legitimate claim. Subsequently, they switched from First Administrators handling the claims to Wellmark handling the claims. First Administrators has shuttered now, there's no way you can really even get into the system and pay claims on it. These were legitimate claims that should've been paid on the employee's behalf. We did the research and did the homework to find the discounts that would've been applied so that we're not paying too much. My recommendation is, I know it's kinda long-winded, but my recommendation is this is a legitimate claim, should've been paid in the first place, was a mistake by First Administrators, you know. This potential employee could've had some, some liability in it, but I, I think it was really just that First Administrators dropped the ball.
How much is it?
It's about $3,500.
Can we take that out of our?
Just our health fund.
Health fund?
It would just be paid like a normal claim and coded that way. And like I said, we did the research and did the legwork to make sure we had all of the, that we got all the appropriate discounts that would've been provided through the PPO. So my recommendation is we would pay it. If the TPA were still open, I'd be in front of the board at the TPA recommending that they push the claim through and wouldn't have to come here because we'll have to pay it outside of normal process. But it would come from those same funds.
Need a motion?
Move the medical claim in question to be paid from the health insurance fund.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Board of Administration, approval of resolution for notice of property sale, partial 790740.
Sir Chair, move the hearing date be set for the 26th day of May at 4:35.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Finally. Discussion and action on the agreement between Woodbury County and the City of Sergeant Bluff involving the Dogwood Trail Project. Dennis Butler?
Here with the Honorable Mayor from Sergeant Bluff, John Winkle. We also have City Administrator Aaron Lincoln here with us. The project has been in works for a couple months now, work staff working back and forth. We've worked with Bob Johnston, our attorney from Des Moines, who handles all of our financial stuff like this. We've come to the end here where we're gonna sign an agreement that's 801,000. The wheel cost share with him, 801,766. It follows pretty much our TIF policy plan that we received, where it's 25% for water and sewer, 50% I believe for land purchases. And following this agreement here, we can tell you what the county share is for the street work. It's 532,042. For the water and sewer, 156,250. For the land purchase, 113,385, for a total of 801,677. The total project cost is $2,998,738. They're presently working on annexation, bringing that property into their city limits. Also, that's Segment 1. Segment 2 is the county share, and Mark Nara would like to have the overlay put on from the interstate bridge that goes just north of the rest areas over to where this ties up to Dogwood Trail. Originally, we thought that'd be around 180,000, but when they got their bids, Mark Nara figured it'd be about 108,000 with potential costs that would not exceed 120,000 total. That, we are gonna pay out of our CF Road Project money we set aside a couple years ago to take care of 225th, 235th, and Allison Road. We do have about 231,000 left in that project, and Mark felt comfortable that we could take out the 120,000 there, still leave enough money there to maintain the road properly with dirt, dust control, any greater problems, they had to do things like that. In agreement that Sergeant Bluff has agreed to, we'll probably do a capitalized loan, which the capitalized loan is where we borrow the money, get the money, probably maybe in August or in that timeframe, once they get annexed in. They'll pay the first two, one, two, or three years' interest cost totally until we decide when we can start the principal payments. The latest principal payments would start would be 1819, when CF money starts coming in. But the full intent of this is for Sergeant Bluff help repay that with a 50/50 share of their increment monies coming in, once their projects get going in that particular annexed properties. So, and we do have, when we bid this out, it'll be up to the individual bank how to work out the terms. But currently, we have been using one bank, always seems to get the low bid. Every bank's eligible to submit a bid. But I have conferred with the person we normally work with, and they're comfortable that we can start principal payments whenever. The one thing you wanna look at, you don't wanna get the term too far out because the interest rates start climbing when you go 10, 15, 20. Probably the ideal thing would work with gentlemen here would be a 10-year loan. Yes?
Does this directly speed up the annexation process, or is that on a separate timeline?
I'll let them address this.
It's on its own timeline. We met with the Development Board a week and a half ago in Des Moines, two weeks?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago in Des Moines. And we're on the track with them to have the annexation completed, meeting all their timelines, have it done by July. In July, I think it was July.
But we're not able really to borrow the money until it's annexed, are we? Or we borrow the money, but we don't make any, how does that work?
We'll borrow the money after it's annexed.
Okay.
That way, we can follow through with another procedure to help pay for it. And their intent is to pay it back as fast as they can pay it back. There is no penalty to pay that loan back quicker to any bank. It's workable with each bank, so the option is there. It will set up a 10-year plan or 15, whatever, but preferably make it as less years as we can and keeps the interest rates down.
And you'll come back to us when you have that firmed up on how long the loan will be and when the principles start and?
Absolutely, because we'll have to go through amendment with the TIF. Also, we'll have to go through the borrowing process, too. So it'll take, you know, a month or two to get all this done through the different hearings.
John?
The level of cooperation, something I always look for, and it's been unbelievable. Dennis has been a huge help. We've used the same bond council, both of us, and agreed that that was the most efficient way. And we cooperated doing that, we didn't each go hire our own and have to reinvent the wheel. Mark Nara's been a huge help. And we were able to help the county a little bit because we took care of the land acquisition and some shoulder work. Um, and we were able to help the county a little bit because we took care of the land acquisition and some shoulder work they needed to finish the piece they'd like to do. And so we handled that, a negotiation, and we're actually paying the landowner. And then the county's going to reimburse us as part of this. So there's been some give and take, and that's what I like the best about the whole thing. Um, secondly, um, Aaron Lincoln and myself and Dave Christiansen, our city inspector, have taken this role as the first one through the process with the county as kind of guinea pigs. And, you know, there's been some issues come and go, you know, with being the first one, and that was totally expected. We've been, been able to work every one of those out. Um, we continue to support more and more communities, as I've explained to you before, more and more communities in the county to help them get some kind of economic development activity started. Last time I was here, I briefed you on Crackerville and Cushing, working together, we're trying to help them. We're doing it in a number of ways. And, um, they, tonight at our council meeting, after we leave here, Cushing will become the eighth community that we provide those support services for. As far as the economic development support and advice, along with David Flyzer and our buddy here. And, uh, the other thing we're doing is providing them copies of ordinances, um, all those kinds of procedural things. And we're doing all those things at cost, basically, we're not, it's not a profit center for us. We feel it comes as part of the responsibility of being the first ones through the process, and it's something just good to do anyway. So we're taking that very seriously. Like I say, we're working with eight communities now across the county doing that, so. And I think we have a very solid process here that rolls the money. So it's almost like there can be exponential growth here in the county because you're not just putting money out there and ever see it again. This money accomplishes an extremely good thing, creating jobs and economic development, and then the money comes back. And I would just say one thing, some of the smaller towns, this agreement is not, I don't think this agreement can be a hundred percent cookie cutter. I think we'll have to modify this for some of the other smaller communities. But we've tried to keep an eye towards that, and there's a little paragraph in here that says this could be changed. You know, it's for some of these other small communities. Because we have a pretty good level of resources in Sergeant Bluff for a community our size, but some of the other towns in the, in the county do not. And we want this per your instructions, this needs to be countywide. CF has requested that this response be countywide for the tax dollars, not just the ones around, and we're fine with that, so. Putting our money where our mouth is, trying to make sure it happens. Everything we're doing, we're being asked to do. We're not trying to go take over anything, but we want to help. And like I say, we've now signed up with eight of the communities in the county, just trying to help them and make sure that we can meet all your wishes as far as countywide response and CF's wishes as far as countywide.
Well, and I appreciate that the City of Sergeant Bluff is taking the, the interest, um, in the agreement. And I think this agreement more clearly spells out the, the ratio which will, the county will be paid back. And I think you hit it on the head, tax increment financing is good when it's generating economic development and truly leveraging our, our tax dollars, so. Appreciate it.
One important thing to remember here, once they do pay us back, we walk away. It's their, it's their baby, we're gone.
Don't go too far.
We're there to help.
On this project, anyway. Is there maybe the other projects? Is that, I'll, I'll fill in the rest there, on this project.
They'll, they take over the TIF revenue, and then if there's another project down the road, it will be there.
Need a motion?
Move approval of the agreement between Woodbury County and the City of Sergeant Bluff involving the Dogwood Trail Project?
Second.
Discussion?
I have one question. The eight hundred one thousand six seventy-seven, that's a cap.
You won't be paying any more than that on this project, so that is a cap.
Okay, the Dogwood project.
Yes, with this project.
Correct.
We hope to be back for more because it'll mean good things are happening. And we're hoping, hoping to be back alongside some of the other communities in the county. And we understand the timeframes that Terry Lewis has, uh, played out there for us all, and the, the money to be spent, not, you know, don't go hog-wiled up front.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Right.
You're way in front of us already, don't get any further in front of us. Because we're borrowing money to do the project, it's not income we have.
Understand.
And actually, that, that plan, we've received it, but we have yet to really, as a board, digest, um, what it means countywide, how it'll radiate out, the timeframe, how much will be released for taxes. So you are maybe a little bit ahead of us, but it's a good project, so good luck.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Why don't you sign that, and, uh, then we'll give it to Mr. Gill and get all the other stuff done and get you a copy.
Do you want me to date it?
Sure.
Since the twelve?
Yep. Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Thank you all very much.
Okay. County Auditor Patrick Gill, receive auditor's quarterly report. Need a motion?
Move to receive the quarterly report.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Uh, approval of twenty-eighty agreement between Woodbury County and Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation Districts for funds and management. Funding and management of the watershed inspection and maintenance program in Woodbury County. Everybody know what that is? Uh, we had a visit from Louis Byer a month or so ago. And Louis goes out and looks at all of the structures and the watershed-type events to make sure they are in good condition or need repair or whatever. Um, I think over time, he's saved us an awful lot of money just by inspecting all that stuff to make sure it's not crumbling in front of us. Um, I don't know, what do we pay him?
Our, our share is one half, it's thirty-one thousand, and it is out of rural base.
Fifteen thousand, then, basically.
Our share is thirty-one.
Oh, okay.
And then they pay the other pounds.
Need a motion?
Move the chairman be authorized to sign.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney P.C. Who put that on? Yes, sir.
Okay, we started this with our last, uh, capital loan here for our CIPs. And what this is, it's keeping a closed-in on the costs we have for bonding. They will not exceed the five thousand dollars for their fees, and then they will not exceed four hundred dollars for miscellaneous expenses unless they come back to the board and tell them we need more money for miscellaneous expenses. And this has worked out well. To give example, last time they accidentally billed us fifty-four hundred, we went back and got the four hundred back, they had no question about it. They just missed it by chance. So it does work. And at least we know our costs upfront, what they're going to be.
Dennis, it's a five thousand, the way I read it was a five thousand dollar flat fee.
Correct.
So it's not a not-to-exceed?
Right.
It's a five thousand dollar flat fee and then a not-to-exceed four hundred dollars on the other?
Miscellaneous expenses.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Need a motion?
Sorry, one more question.
Okay.
Is that for a period of time, a duration, does that come renewal every year?
That, that, that will come each time we have a bond issue. It's something we started the last one, so we know what our upfront costs are going to be to handle a bond issue.
Okay.
And we always had Allers and Cooney do it, they've worked very well with us.
Is this for the capital loan?
Yes, this is for our capital loan we approved last week, and there'll be some more, um, documents approved down the road here within the next couple of weeks. We want to close the loan by June first.
Okay, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir. Okay. We have a situation, as they say in TV, oh, wait a minute, I'm in the wrong one. Approval of increased number of Woodbury County Sheriff Reserve deputies. I tried to jump over you.
Yeah, that's all right. Dave Drew Sheriff, and my request is, uh, to increase our number of reserves. Uh, and the reason is, uh, we can't keep up with all the requests. Uh, when this started probably back, uh, in April, when we got this all up and going a year ago, um, we were at twenty-five or capped at around that number by the time we put everybody through the classes. And so what we have been up against is just, uh, we have several people that volunteer all the time and some that will do certain events. And so we're trying to expand that pool so that we can use, uh, you know, just a bigger group of people for a variety of events. Uh, we did twenty-four hundred hours from April till December. And so far this year, we have, uh, worked our reserves six hundred and twenty-three hours. And they have, uh, assisted us in tornado, homicide, uh, inclement weather, uh, serious major accidents that block roadways. They've worked, uh, Halloween, uh, in different communities in the county as a patrol function. Fourth of July celebration, if you've ever been to the one in Bronson, I think you're probably sticking about five or six thousand people into a very small area. So they do traffic control there. Um, they do weekender programs. When our, uh, jail has those situations where, before, we used to pay deputies to go out, or correctional officers, to work weekenders in the, uh, rural area to, say, clean the fire station. Or whatever, uh, is deemed for them to do during those two days, we use those people, saving us money. Um, they've worked, uh, just a variety of Saturday in the park, different proms, Leeds Days, uh, Soulland Heartwalk, the county fair always, the different Easter egg hunts throughout the, uh, county and a number of events. And now the police department is, uh, is requesting to use them more, and I've met with Chief Young, and we're willing to assist, uh, the police department in, uh, a number of events. Here's one, for example, a Rivercade, uh, they have, uh, going to save the police department some money because of overtime. Uh, they're going to lead the parade, and that's costing nobody any money. So there, there's just a number of things that we can use our reserve deputies for. And if I give you the twenty-four hundred hours, uh, it really comes to nine, ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars. Now, we would have either paid the, that out in overtime, or we would have, uh, forego those kind of events. So you can see the, uh, the impact that our reserves have on, uh, a sheriff's budget or just public safety as a whole. So our recommendation would be that you uncap that. Ideally, uh, and I understand you hold the purse strings and the number of people we can have, so, you know, I think I said in there, um, imagination of number, but fifty would be a, a nice number if we had to. Matthew?
Um, one of the reasons I asked if you wanted to talk about this was the hope that it, these reserves could be used for the CF traffic control. Is that a possibility in the future to save some dollars on that end?
That's, uh, ideally where we're going to try to go, but, and the number is, some of those guys are still at work during some of those hours. So if we could get some of those reserves that aren't working. You know, we get a pool of people, and they all hold full-time jobs, and if they're off by five, or they work different jobs, and ideally, that would be the way we could go. And we're trying to use that some on the weekends when we're doing CF and some other things.
Of the twenty-five we have now, how many do you typically connect with for a, for a task? How many are available out of that number?
Do you have twenty-five now? I'm sorry.
We're just, we have about twenty-three.
Okay.
Uh, we're just shy of that. That twenty-five is our cap, but I think that what we get is probably nine to ten. I don't think, uh, I always use Dr. Pearson as an example, you're not going to see him probably hop in a squad and direct traffic. You probably see him at different events that are, are community policing events. He's, he loves doing those events, and not that he wouldn't do some of the others, but, um, it makes Ed nervous. Uh, work counseling for Dr. Pearson's a little higher than, uh, someone else, so. So we, uh, we're, we use Dr. Pearson very selectively. Probably better just to walk around with the sheriff. Yeah, I think so, too. But, uh, yeah. So, um, our, our hope is that you would see the, uh, value of this program and expanding it. You know, we have, uh, we recognized, uh, Anthony Goll for our Reserve of the Year. Anthony is a schoolteacher, uh, fire chief in Sergeant Bluff, uh, family man, boy scout leader, and yet finds time to, um, be a reserve deputy. So that's what a lot of these people are, yet they still do things to come out and help us, which is amazing. Because they all have family commitments, they have jobs, and yet they'll still find some time along with the training. You know, we, we, they go through training once a week. We have about ten people right now in, uh, in wait, in waiting to become a reserve. And then we have, uh, Potawatomi County would like to send some up here for our training. Uh, that will help reduce the cost, we will charge, obviously, Potawatomi County. And Plymouth County, I think, would like to add some more, and some other counties. So that will help defray the costs of our, uh, because we have the instructors for that.
Is there reasoning for, uh, if we went to fifty, is there reasoning for a cap? Uh, I mean, I don't know the reasoning.
You know, last time, the, the discussion centered around, and I don't know if it's still an issue, it was paying for the physicals.
Right.
And our, who's paying for the physicals this time? There was liability insurance, I mean, there were some issues that came up on why we did do a cap because of those factors. But I don't, it seems to be self-sufficient now, is it? I mean, are you guys paying for your own?
Oh, Ed Graves is not here. I'm thinking that we are paying, those guys are still paying for their physicals, but I know we use the doctor, or even, Dr. Cassens.
Right. The MMPI that has to be done, and the, the physicals, and, uh, you know, it's just the standard stuff that should have been higher. Gil, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we have the MMPI that has to be done, I have the standard physicals and drug tests that have to be done. Uh, so those, those are expenses, uh, but I believe those will be charged back to the sheriff's department. And, uh, if they're, they seem to be coming out good financially with this, so it makes sense. And one thing that, that Dave has told me before is that if you've got a core of, uh, reserve officers, you only have a certain number that really work those. He probably mentioned that just a few minutes ago, but I have short-term memory loss, so I may not, may not have that down exactly. But you, because you, you have that, that smaller core, it, it's important to have, I think, the extra numbers.
And do we pay any higher liability insurance, whether we have twenty-five, twenty-eight, forty-two, or fifty?
No, no, we, I mean, you, it's minimal. Uh, you, there's a minimal liability cost, no, uh, workers' comp, it goes up slightly, but very, very slightly.
So then if I understand supervisor on this question is possibly why you have a cap at all?
Right. Given this, I don't see the need for a cap.
Well, I, I would appreciate letting, letting the sheriff decide how many we need, I, I would appreciate that, that's just not always been the case, so I, uh, I, I, obviously, I'd be in favor of that.
Well, I would move to remove the cap.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, if we put a, a number on there, you could always come back again if you exceeded that number.
That I could, right. I agree.
I'm just kind of nervous anytime you do anything without a cap.
I will say this, Larry, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
At one time when, uh, this started under Sheriff White, uh, and Sheriff Miller then, and under Sheriff Amy, at one time, we were up to eighty.
I know, I know it got quite larger at one time, but there was a lot of them.
But they didn't go through, they didn't go through all the things that we are doing now.
Yeah.
So, uh, I mean, so you're probably not comparing the same things.
I'd like to amend the motion to, to fifty, and if you need more, come back and request it.
Is there a second to amend?
Doesn't the original motioner have to accept?
No, you vote on the amended motion.
Well, I'll second that since that was your recommendation in the, was fifty, so.
Okay, roll call.
Is this on the amendment?
This is on the amendment.
The amendment.
I wonder who's first?
Lawson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Taylor?
No.
Allen?
Aye.
Watson?
No. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call. This motion is to remove the cap.
Lawson?
Uh, no, I think Dave can come back if he needs more.
Smith?
Nay.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next one is somewhat frustrating.
You can announce the vote, please.
Pardon me?
Announce the vote.
The vote, it was...
Oh, maybe in a minute.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Larry Axelund. Axelund is A-X-L-U-N-D. I live at 2516 41st Street. And I want to thank you for sparing a couple hours to listen to me here tonight. Bending the rules a little bit.
You're, you're going to be buried.
The reason I'm here, and is there a chance I could give you some papers? Approach the chair.
Sure.
Maybe just pass these out.
I believe we have this in our packet.
Yeah, probably. Anyway, I'm here. I went and done some refinancing and I had an appraiser out to my home, which I, I built the house about 40 years ago. And I've had pretty much the same property all, all those years, although I did have 2.22 acres that I sold to my secretary and her husband in 1995. Otherwise, same. Anyway, in doing the appraisal, he called me up and he says, did you know that you are paying for 21.37 acres taxes instead of 4.2? And naturally I said, no. And one of those sheets there will show where, I don't remember what year, it starts at 1999 maybe, and just my property, yeah, that one right there in your right hand. Just my property started out around $32,000 and all of a sudden 19, or 2011, it went up to 105,000. And I said, well, I don't have 21.37 acres, I have 4.2. So all I'm here for is to see if you guys, I'm going to be on your mercy and your grace to see if we can't get some money back to me. I think two, the two last years are, I think, taken care of. Al Jordan had mentioned that I don't have to worry about that, but it's the other two, 19, or 2011 and 12 that we're addressing, I think, pretty much here tonight.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay, Al.
Al Jordan, City Assessor. This error apparently occurred in 2010. And through the board of review and my office, we have the ability to correct for 2013, 2014, and 2015, and that's been done. We do not have the authority to make any corrections for 2011 or 2012. And I don't know if this board has, I don't know what this board's authority is to do anything with that.
Josh?
This is controlled by Iowa Code Section 445.60. The board can refund an erroneous tax as long as an appeal is made to the board within two years of when the assessment was payable. So as applied to this situation, the 2011 assessment was due September 12, of 12 in March of 13. So it would be past the deadline for that assessment. However, the board could refund the 2012 assessment because we're within that two-year timeframe.
So we can forgive 12, but we can't forgive 11 because it's past the time.
Okay, well, for the, for the record, if the error were corrected for 2012, the value would be $197,800 as opposed to the erroneous value of 261,100. So I think the auditor can do the math on that.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying that if you can correct the, the error for 2012, that's what the error would be.
Okay, all right.
You cannot correct the error for 2011, we, we have no recommendation.
You understand where we are?
Yeah, but I highly disagree. I mean, first of all, my taxes are paid through escrow. And I very seldom look at them. My secretary pays my taxes. And just, just for kicks, I, I went back and I gave you copies of 2011 and 2012. And if I were to find an error, show me how I go about defining it. Because on this sheet right here, they're charging me for 21.37 acres. But on this, it says that my property is 228 feet wide, 944 long, which happens to come out to 4.2, not 21.37. Why would I question it? I trust the city. I paid the taxes, never been late on it. So statute of limitations, I, I'm disagreeing with that. I know nothing about that. I'm in the insurance business. If I make a mistake to a client, I don't care how many years later, it comes back on me or the company. There's no two-year statute of limitation. So, I mean, I paid the taxes, you took my money. It was not your money. Why would I not get it back?
Larry, I agree with you.
Pardon me?
I agree with you.
Thank you.
According to our attorney, our hands are tied and legally we can only go back.
Well, maybe some things ought to be changed. I mean, that, from what I understand, that.
I don't disagree.
Particular thing has been on the books since 1949. How many 49 Studebaker's do you see out there?
Not many.
You know? So, I mean, there's, maybe I'm here to get them changed and I got to wonder who else has went through this. I, I just, just, just for kicks, I said, I wonder where in the world they got 21.37 acres. I added mine up and I lost an acre when you put outer drive-through. I had 5.2. Well, then I took the church property, which you're not getting, getting any taxes on. I added that, I was 2.2 acre short. So I went on the other side, my other neighbor, and for some reason that comes out 21.37 acres. Is that just a coincidence?
I don't know.
So I'm just saying, I, I don't care what the statute of limitations are. I feel very much I have all of it coming back. I mean, I'm, I'm not even after interest, but I mean, you got to use my money. I paid it in good faith, never been late once. Well, except for right now because per request of Al Jordan, he says, don't pay the last year. The money's in escrow, so I stopped it. I paid $20. I already got a bill for $85 for interest on that. So again, your grace and your mercy and your honor and your honesty, go from there.
Is there any other recourse that we could do?
Unfortunately, there's not. And I mean, the, the statute is created by the state legislature and it would, it would take a change at the state legislate, state legislature level for there to be anything different that the board could do. The only other time the board can do an abatement, when there's a, when it's shown that the individual petitioning the board is unable to contribute to the public revenue. And there's a, a process to go through for that, but that's not the situation that you're in or that, that this is with. And it's just, you know, that's what the, that's what the statute is and it would be illegal for the Board of Supervisors to refund the tax. Even past the two years.
You know, it is your fault or the city's fault for overcharging me and I'm supposed to find it.
I, I agree that, I mean, it's no wrong of your own, other than, other than that it's past the two-year statute of limitations and there's nothing we can do about that.
At the very same time in 2010, I wouldn't have paid a whole bunch of attention to see a big raise in my taxes anyway if I'd have really addressed it. Because that particular year ended the pavement assessment for the road that went by my place. So that come off, this went on. And again, I look at this, why would I not trust the city? There is nothing on there that says 21.37 acres. It gives my property description, but that's not what I'm paying for.
Well, Al has admitted somebody made a mistake in his office. He's doing 13, 14, 15. We can do 12, but I'm here and we can't do anything with 11.
Well.
Joshua, is there, there's also no recourse for future abatements other than not being able to contribute to the public good?
No, I'm not aware of any other mechanism.
I think we all want to give it to you, it was, we don't know how.
Bob, Josh, is there, is that, is that code? I don't understand governments have a two-year statute of limitation and there is no other recourse to district court or anything then?
Not that's set out in the code section. I, I think the statute of limitations would still control even if there was something filed in district court. Because the, the code section says a refund shall not be ordered or made unless the claim for refund is presented to the board within two years of the date the tax was due. And it's pretty clear.
I'm disappointed.
Okay, we need a motion to return the taxes to Mr. Axelund for the year 2000 fiscal year.
2012.
Assessment year.
2012, right.
Could be the assessment year 2012.
I move that the taxes be refunded from the county and assessment year 2012 to Mr. Axelund.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Sorry. Board of Supervisor Jeremy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a follow-on to last week's informational item on increasing the Woodbury County Commission of Veterans Affairs from three to five members. This comes from the commission itself as well as the executive director. And so Joshua was kind enough to write up a resolution, which is the, the proper way of doing this. And so that was included. I apologize for it being a little late. That's no fault of Joshua's but my own. So that is in your emails, I can read it. But other than that, there's a three-fold reason for this. It's the ease of making a quorum, especially as, as certain individuals tend to be retired and sometimes winter elsewhere. Also, increasing the diversity and the representation from different campaigns and conflicts was thought to be a help to the commission. And so those are my opening remarks. If there are any thoughts.
This is a request from the commission, though.
Correct, yeah.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Mr. Gleiser?
Do, is that a resolution or is that understood?
Good evening. David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. Just here to get the board's support for a resolution, to be the sponsor of an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a workforce housing tax incentive program on behalf of Char-Mac Assisted Living, which is a company, assisted living company located in Lawton, Iowa. They are currently, we are, have plans to expand their existing facility for a four-phase project. The initial phase, first phase, is a $3.7 million expansion, which will create a new memory care unit for folks with Alzheimer's. And they would also then in the following phases develop out the back lots into condos. And it's a great project, was, have been working with Dennis Butler and the Lawton City Attorney and the Lawton City Council. Attended the city council meeting this last week and the council approved to move forward with establishing a new tax increment financing district to pay for the infrastructure that this project will require. So essentially what we're doing with this resolution, and I've spoken with the program manager at the state, is giving the, the entity some authority to move forward. There is a local match that's required for this particular tax incentive program. It's based on $1,000 per dwelling unit. Ultimately, the project will require a $30,000 local match. What, what is required for that is actually documentation from the city of Lawton that they will use the TIF dollars towards that local match. The TIF will be way in excess of $30,000, so we're, have no problem with that.
So we are resolving what?
Just to allow county staff to move forward with assisting the project.
Need a motion?
And it's the city of Lawton that's committing the finances. The county is just verbally giving the support for the project.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the, you know, the, you know, when they TIF, TIF it, we're going to be forfeiting some of the, the amount of taxes.
Well, the TIF, we're, we're not going to collect anything there anyway.
Exactly, so.
What I'm getting out of this is basically the county is loaning our people to them to get this done.
Yes, sir.
Very basic. Need a, need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Need to sign. Thanks, sir.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, we're going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Orton Slough Drainage District Trustees meeting to approve the May 5, 2015 minutes. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I couldn't believe that you didn't have a single item for the agenda.
Occasionally, we have weeks like that, so. We will have some next week, though. We were redoing some signs down in the area around CF and around Dogwood Trail as well, so.
What's our tour? Is that next week or is that the week after?
Pardon me?
Our road tour.
Our road tour is next week, so.
Yeah.
I think we were talking about 9:30 in the morning, meeting here at the courthouse. And then we'll, is the auditor attending?
How much room do you have?
Well, we can bring two vehicles.
Or we can put you on the roof.
If you just want to take one vehicle, it could be designated as.
It depends on how agile the two new supervisors are about getting into the third row seats, so.
We don't have to ride on the top, I'm fine.
Maybe you can take Pat's place on the roof.
Pat is already assigning the seats to you guys, clear in the back. That's, that's good to have.
Jackie usually serves as our navigator, so.
No one wants to sit by me, that's why.
The driver does.
Shotgun, yeah.
But we can, we can do it either way. Pat deputized me to take minutes usually, so.
in response to our request for proposals as prepared by the engineer for the drainage district. The total quotation added up to thirty-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. We've reviewed the figures for recently let project work. It's higher than we would have liked to have seen, but it's within the limits of, of a reasonable quotation for this level of work. The, the price that caused me a, a little bit of concern initially was on the furnish and install the pipe, but they also have to remove two-hundred feet of pipe and dispose of that off-site. This isn't a place where we can bury that pipe in a road bed. We have to actually physically truck it off-site and destroy it, so. The contractor can mobilize within two to three weeks to get this work done to minimize the disruption to the farm.
Need a motion to approve?
Move approval of the contract.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I couldn't believe that you didn't have a single item for the agenda.
Occasionally, we have weeks like that, so. We will have some next week, though. We were redoing some signs down in the area around CF and around Dogwood Trail as well, so.
What's our tour? Is that next week or is that the week after?
Pardon me?
Our road tour.
Our road tour is next week, so. I think we were talking about nine-thirty in the morning, meeting here at the courthouse. And then we'll, is the auditor attending? Well, we can bring two vehicles.
Or we can put you on the roof.
It depends on how agile the two new supervisors are about getting into the third row seats, so.
We don't have to ride on the top, I'm fine.
Maybe you can take Pat's place on the.
We can take a look over at next week.
Glad he's already assigned the seats to you guys, clear in the back, that's, that's good deal.
Jackie usually serves as our navigator, so.
No one wants to sit by me, that's why.
The driver does.
Shotgun, yeah.
But we can, we can do it either way. Pat deputized me to take minutes usually, so. If they are not? Oh, if they are all together, yeah.
Well, that's a matter of opinion, maybe, I don't know, no.
But, yeah, we, we do have a tour route set up. One thing that it won't include is the Smithland Drainage District. We're going to be doing some preliminary work with the new emergency manager on that. There's, for, for those of you who are new to the board, one of the districts that's managed by the board, similar to the Orton Slough, is the Bennett McDonald Smithland Flood Protection District. That involves levees on the left bank and the right bank of the Little Sioux River in the proximity of the town of Smithland. We've been getting a series of unacceptable ratings on that. We're finding we're not alone. The Corps of Engineers spent twenty-two million dollars on the reaches from the Monona County line to the Missouri River. That's all been rated unacceptable as well. Approximately how long were we to budget for this, time-wise, again? Oh, we were figuring to be back mid-afternoon with a, with a break for lunch somewhere in there, so. We should be back here by three earlier if the board chooses. We'll, we'll set up to have you back here by three with the projects we'll be looking at and reviewing. And again, if you, if the board decides to forego any of those, then we'd get you back early, of course.
It's usually a full day, and even then, we're probably not getting it all in.
Again, we won't be going all the way to Smithland.
Yeah. We need to be back by one.
Oh, you need to be back by one?
Have to be back by one.
Okay, we will adjust the route appropriately and stick with the projects that are roughly in the western half of the county, so.
I can be back at three. I'm available till three.
We talking about starting then?
Nine-thirty is the kind of hour I thought we had started out. Did you want to go earlier?
Well.
I got nine o'clock.
Oh, you got nine o'clock, well, I can go nine o'clock, too. I don't know why I had nine-thirty in my notes. Nine to one? Okay. We'll see what we can work in in that time period.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, adjourn Orton Slough Drainage District Trustee meeting, do we need to vote on that? Nope. All right, continue the board meeting. We have reports on committees and meetings. Jeremy and Mike. Parking lot. Out at drive you.
Mike headed Woodbury County Building Services.
How's that? I dropped off some pictures of the parking lot at Social Services. I got a work order to repair the back parking lot. And after going over and looking at this, you can see there's quite considerable damage. These holes that you see in the one picture where you see the water, them are probably eight, ten inches deep. All being pretty much caused by the, the big trucks that's running in, in and out of there. As you can see on the next, on one of the next pictures, you'll see one shows the, the concrete paved running all the way to the backside of, of the convenience store, and that leads back to the state's building back there, which would be back to the north of the, of the general store. The other one is a picture of the, I don't know if it's even called Jiffy Lube anymore, but it used to be Jiffy Lube. That's their driveway leading, as if their cars come in to their building, they come out, they circle back around, and that's their driveway that leads them out. So and what I'm looking for, what I, what I would suggest is, is I'd like to close off that road that come, just allows people to just come barreling through there. Mainly, go ahead.
We went down that road with the city. And I think the buses turn around in there and everything else.
Well, I, I don't know about that. I do know that there's plenty of room everywhere else to turn. This, this is a, this is a blacktop road, is not a concrete road, not made for heavy trucks.
Have you talked to Patty about this at all?
Nope, nope, I just got the work order to go over and fix it. So this, this is just my way of, it's a suggestion.
All right.
It's up to you guys to decide whether or not you wanted to do this. I know that I get constant complaints of semis parking in there. They dolly down. I've actually had to call companies up and make them come out and get their trucks and get them out of there. Trucks pull up in front of the Veteran Affairs right across the handicap parking, they park, they go into the store. It's just, it's a non-stop deal. I've already got permission to put some poles up, up front to help protect the handicap. That was at the last board meeting, I believe. Now I'd like to do something in the back half, not only to stop the damage to our road and save taxpayer dollars from creating more damage back here, it's also, also to help the safety of our workers that are coming in and out of their cars, which I'm sure if you talk to, to Patty or anybody else, the cars that come whipping through there are, are coming through at a pretty good clip.
No, I, I realize that, and I know the problem.
Right.
But check with Patty, because I think this was taken to the city at one time, and there's problems with it as far as easements and everything else. Now, I might be mistaken, but I don't think so.
I believe that best my knowledge, there is no easement. I, I've, I've looked at the stuff, I have not seen no easement. Like I, like, like I tried to show here is that everybody's got their own road. Everybody's got their own road. This road that's coming through there is, is Woodbury County property. I don't, I don't, I know of no easements. I, I know of no reason, I, I know of no reasons why we can't enclose it off. Yeah, I, I just think it's for the safety and taxpayer burden of, of having to go out and keep repairing this, this stuff here where these big trucks, you know, come through there. And it's, like I say, it's not once a day, it's, it's all day long.
Right, and I understand that.
Right, right.
Check with Patty and then bring it back to us if there's not a problem.
Actually, why don't you check with the city and see what is there, see if there are any restrictions.
Right.
So basically, this is a shortcut that if it's closed, everyone can still get where they need to go.
Yeah, yeah. We, we've actually closed it off before. And the, and the funny thing is, is you, you could put cones up out there to just try to stop some of them people. Well, we've done it before while we're working out there, and you won't believe it, they'll run right over and just truck right on out of there.
So you're proposing like a concrete barrier like this?
I would like to either do a, an actual road barrier, something that's going to really deter people from coming across there. I've, I, I'd like to see, to tell you the truth, I, I'd like to see a fence put up, to continue off the fence on the backside of Social Services to actually enclose our property. And if you guys are familiar with what goes on out there, we, we got people that sit out in the corner, drink at all hours of night. They, 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 they're vagrants that come in and party. They, they, I mean, we pick up all kinds of bottles back there. So I would really like to see eventually, I mean, not now, but I'd say eventually, I'd like to see it actually fenced off, just, just to keep people out of the property.
So what's the best means then, getting a letter from the city, getting something from the state? I don't know if we want to talk to.
I think you need to go check with the city on, or any easements or whatever, and.
Well, the recorder's, the recorder's office should show any, any easements, and that's where I've got most of my information. And I've, and usually if you got an easement, it'll stay right on there, and I've not yet seen nothing. Yeah, is, is it going to bother some people? Probably. But sometimes you, you got to look at the safety. We got people that, I mean, you can go to Patty, you can ask them, they, they all know, that these people come whipping through there. And it's not just the state trucks, it's not just Jiffy Lube vendors or anybody else. It's, it's, there's a lot of people that just, you know, it's, it's easier just to drive around the building now far side than it is to back up and go back out the same way you came back in. On the far side of the building, there is room, there, there is room for people to turn around.
Well, let's err on the side of making sure we're not, you know, breaking any.
Yep, because we, we discussed this because we were going to park back there, and we ran into problems, I can't remember exactly.
I, I, what I recall is that people were, were saying that they didn't want to disrupt the people driving through there. That's what I remember. I don't remember anybody saying nothing about an easement. People think there's an easement, but I have yet to see it. I will fully check it, I'll, I'll go all the way through it for you. I will find out.
And it could be a city planning and zoning thing rather than, it may not be an easement, but it could be a zoning restriction, so. Check that as well.
I, I do know a, a part of that road project up front, now that may stall us a little bit, if, if, say if everything comes back good, it may stall us a little bit from blocking off, because I think they're going to tear that road up up front. So that may make it to where we do need to have some access back there, but not forever. I mean, once that stuff is done, we should be able to, to make this safer.
So you, can you check on those three things and then bring this back as an information item? The, the city's planning and zoning ordinances, the, the construction work and timeline, and then I forget the third thing, but yeah.
I can get it.
Everything, check on everything while you're at it.
I get it, I, I know it's been, I know it's been talked about before, so, yeah, I, I'll check it out fully.
Okay, the front parking, is that figured out?
No, well, actually, it's been asked from Veteran Affairs. Like, when they come in to work in the morning, there's no traffic, so they all, everybody parks everywhere. But when they go for lunch, what happens is they, they'll leave for lunch, they come back, and people that are visiting the stores park out in their area. And so they, they're left nowhere to park that time, or they got to park, they have to park where the store parking, and then move their cars as people leave, so.
So are you talking about employee-designated spots that are for Veterans Affairs? You're not talking about against the building?
Not against the buildings, no, no, I, I, I do have that posted.
Right, right.
We're waiting for weather to get the lines repainted. This is actually, what's asked is the parking out by the road. They want to be able to designate, you know, not really workers, just Woodbury County parking is what they're asking. That way people just don't pull up and park. I, I was there last week, and it's, it's just amazing how, how fast people pull up and they'll park right in front of the building and just take off to the store. I asked one gentleman to not park there, and boy, he, he got pretty irate. He moved, but he got pretty irate. So I, I can imagine what these ladies would feel like going out there trying to tell, ask somebody to move. Because, I mean, they got right down irate, threw their cigarette toward me, I mean, just, but they, they did move.
So are there spots actually designated out?
Yep.
Right now, and you're, you're saying just put up signage to say that these are for Woodbury County employees?
Exactly.
I say we just do it. I mean, the, the others, Social Services, their employees are parking alongside the long side of the building.
Long side, I think, and there, there may even be some more of the Social Services even parking out there. You know, possibly, I'm, I'm not sure who all.
That, that can be worked out internally.
Yeah, it's, it's more or less just Woodbury, it's not designating who parks, but as long as you're Woodbury County.
Well, there's, all along the front there, there's county employees parking there.
There's like three longways, and then there's a few more that are, that are parked straight.
Well, while you're over at City Hall checking on that other stuff, find out if there's any reason why you can't put the signs up.
I'll do that.
If there's no reason, then I think the consensus is, go ahead.
Does that sound commendable to?
We don't need a motion to do that, do we? Get her done?
Good.
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 Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. I went to the memorial services yesterday for the law enforcement folks. Wonderful, they did a great job, they held it inside, thank God. And we had a department head meeting yesterday and covered a lot of ground on that and got out of there in fifty-some minutes, so. That's all I got. Yes, sir.
One thing that came up, I think as we're exiting out, Lisa McNeil, the court administrator, stopped us. Mark and I started talking about potential arming, I don't want to say arming, wiring up the video screens in the courtrooms. There are actually three screens in three different courtrooms. One works, the other two don't. We're supposed to apply courtrooms for them, I don't know how far we go with that, but we have requested to get a price on how much it costs to wire the two screens. And also, Major Stallman and Rose, the lady who works over there is giving us a report. If we do that, what does it save the jail staff? Because I've walked through there, I've seen where they have used a screen, there's no jail staff, no prisoners there. But when you come back and see the other two, you may have three or four jailers standing there with inmates there. This resolve a security possible issue there, and also put those jailers back up where they should be, not staying in courtrooms. So next week, we'll potentially check with the chair, discussion action on possible action there to do it.
Sounds good. Anyone else?
We had a hospitalization meeting. There is discussion of, of tailoring it to surrounding counties, and the consensus was that we would stick with just Woodbury County only because of our scale and our population when they're facing a health problem. So the, it, there will be multi-county meetings if there's an issue that comes up. The judges continued to call it the most challenging part of their day to deal with mental health. There is discussion of how to deal with non-compliant patients so that they can avoid hospitals, and that's basically the reason for the entire committee, I believe. So it's a, it's a challenge and it's ongoing. That's what I have to report about that one.
Anyone else?
Just want to report that Gene has been working very hard on the documents and the website. We've been reviewing process and procedures there. I think you're really going to like what we end up with there. And I've met with the, Mr. Gleiser and I met with the IT department a little bit, talked about the future of the website and what it should look like, and we're going to proceed with that. I think you, I think you'll like it when we're done with it. We do have a question about AP edits, do we? What is the story there, Ed?
As far as the story there, I'd like to have a, a week or two to review it, but I believe we can probably start putting those AP edits now that we've made sure that there's no HIPAA identifiable information in those, in those reports. I believe we can probably start putting them back up, but I'd like a week or two to review it and to confer with the attorney just to get a final solid word from them. Just to play it cautious, I guess. If that's, would meet the board's approval.
AP edits used to go out, those are the things that you folks get to look at, those claims. And what we're looking at, what we've been talking about, is pretty much the same thing that we're doing with the minutes now. I don't know if you've looked at them, but what Gene has really done with the minutes, it's, it's pretty cool. Because you go to where it says copy filed, you click on that, pulls up the document that you discussed at your board meeting, and, and so it's really very transparent. And that's what we hope to do eventually with the AP edits, is the same thing, is you click on that, then you can look at the documentation behind that. If we get the permission to proceed, but we're trying, you know, we're trying to, what we're trying to get to is every time that we get a call from the public is to think about, is there some way that we could put that there so we can direct folks to the website and they can, they can use that? So just ease access and reduce the number of calls for us. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.